Second.
Second, Mr. Danahue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening. Can I make an acceptance of the agenda, please?
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris. Do we have any walk-ins this evening? Seeing none, we're actually gonna go beyond the report of the town administrator and the discussion of the Ellis State at the moment. We are gonna come right back to that. Since we're running a little behind, I'd like to go to a discussion, an interview of the new board and committee applicants for Situate Cultural Council. That would be who?
Is Sue Gallagher?
Yes, Sue Gallagher. Just come up to the table. So just give us your name and address, if you would, please.
Sue Gallagher, 34 Situate.
How are you this evening?
Fine.
Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the Situate Cultural Council.
I spend a great deal of time as a gallery artist. I belong to a number of arts associations. I've been on the board of some arts associations. I have done grant reviews before for my other activities that I do, and I think that I would be a good and fair member of the Arts Council, Cultural Council.
Okay. Have you gone to any other meetings before?
No.
No? How'd you hear about it?
Different people have suggested that I be on it. They've brought it to my attention a couple of times, and so I decided I would try it this year.
Well, you've got the skills, the grant writing and...
Right.
Last time we had, what, three different artists from all different kind of mediums? So I think it's a great group of people, so. We still... I'm sorry. Go ahead. We still have room, right, Lorraine?
That's just that's Lorraine, too.
Three or four slots?
Yep.
You have a very competent group that, if approved, which I'm sure you will be, you'll be joining.
That's good.
Well, thank you very much. We'll be voting later this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Next, we have a discussion and vote on some outdoor entertainment permits. The first one is Empower Her event at the Bowman Marina on Jericho Road on 9/22/16 from 7:00 to 11:00 PM with the DJ Kara Belvin and Ann Vignani. Come on up. Sorry for the wait and the delay, but I guess we're not that far behind, really.
That's fine. This is actually Susan Daly. Our Kara couldn't come tonight, so I...
Oh, okay, Susan.
Susan, yeah.
How are you?
We're both co-chairs of the event, so it works out.
Just tell us a little bit about it.
Sure. I've been involved with Empower Her for about a year, and the organization was founded by Kara Belvin for young girls who lost their moms. So she fits sort of a grief, big brothers, big sisters type of organization, and started out doing events to, you know, get these gals together. Actually, there's several Situate girls that are involved in the community. Kara lives in Situate as well, and many of lots of mothers and other folks in the community have been involved in this organization. I personally am a mentor for one of a gal from Waymouth, so there are, you know, girls that are looking for mentors and people that want to help these young girls. So in order to help this mentor program, this event is their first event to raise a lot of money, and we got some, a lot of donations, and the Bowman's were kind enough to donate their space, so we're hoping to have this event.
It's from 7:00 to 11:00. I think there's a pre-party on the beach for the VIPs, and then the DJ will start at 7:00. And the tent is all set up, and they're getting all their permits through the town directly, so.
The only concern that I have is the 11 o'clock for the DJ. That's the only concern I have, because it is a weeknight.
Right.
And it's a school night and a work night, I believe, so.
Right, okay.
That's the only concern I have. Other than that, I think it sounds like a wonderful event.
We did notify the abutters as well. And so what, is there a better time? Do you want to do?
I mean, 10 o'clock, I think, would be okay. I mean, you can still run the event till 11:00. That's not a problem, but as long as the music could slow down at 10:00. That's usually what we ask for.
Okay.
That sounds fine.
Great.
Is that a problem?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
No, I think it'll be fine.
I just know, I don't think there are any kids who live in that area.
No, the event is sold out. There's 275 people coming, so that's another good thing. Within one week, it's sold out.
Where are you parking?
Situate Yacht Club, and we have the sloop actually, so that they would run extra...
Excellent.
Yeah, down into...
Or if people can walk.
Right, right.
Congratulations. That's a great first.
Library's closed at that time, though, right?
The what?
Library's closed, so you can lose a library.
No, it's not on a Thursday night.
It's 9:00?
Yeah.
Oh, the boatyard next door.
Right, that's another option as well.
Have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move. I have motion in front of me. What is it here? I'll move the outdoor entertainment permit application submitted by Empower Her for an upcoming fundraising event on September 22nd, 2016, at the Bowman Marina for a DJ from 7:00 until 10:00 PM. Abutters have already been notified.
Second.
Second, Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm accusing myself.
Four to zero.
Tell Kara, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a family gathering at the Torsney Family Home at 98 Hammerock Beach Road on 8/12/16 from 6:00 to 8:30 PM. Richard and Joe Torsney.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Fine. Thank you for getting us on the agenda on short notice. I'm not sure if you know that, but they kind of changed the original agenda, so we appreciate it.
That's her. That's who you should be thinking, right there.
Oh, yes. Thank, well, thank you very much. So, one thing to amend. Joseph lives at 98 Hammerock Beach. We also own property at 10 Marshfield Avenue, so that's where the... what we're requesting to have the event at. And what it is, is Joe is a singer-songwriter, and he's got some friends, and they want to hold a concert with four local music acts at 10 Marshfield Avenue, and the time is from 5:00 to 8:30. The idea of it is, is to shut it down before it gets dark. And the attendees would be family, friends, and neighbors.
Any abutters ever been notified? Yes?
Abutters have been notified.
All right. Anything, John? Tony?
Are there any abutters here? Any?
Is it taking place on the property or in the street around?
On the property.
On the property.
Right. It's a fairly decent-sized lot, so it's on the property.
So where is that? What is it? Is it resident? I don't know the...
It's a mixed-use building. In Hammerock, as you go over the Bridgeway Bridge, the Marshfield Ave Bridge, you have a hair salon, and then on the corner, you have a mixed-use building, apartments up top, and a pet food store on the first floor. So that's the building.
Excellent. All right. Sean, you good?
No, no, that's great.
Have a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Richard and Joe Torsney for an upcoming family and friends gathering on August 12th, 2016, at property located at 10 Marshfield Ave from 5:00 until 8:30 PM.
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris. Further discussion?
Just, there's not gonna be any food. There's no, nothing being sold, no tickets, not, none of that stuff, right? Just...
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Good seeing you, Joe.
Yes.
Good baseball player there.
Next, we have a discussion and vote. International Overdose Awareness Day. Emery Galvin from Fax. Hi, Emery. How are you?
Great. Thanks for having me.
Certainly.
Thank you. So I'm here to answer any questions about a special event permit that we submitted. The Situate Fax Coalition has been working with our first responders with Situate Police and Fire, as well as family members and community members who have lost a loved one to overdose or involved in this prevention and awareness cause. On Wednesday, August 31st, is International Overdose Awareness Day. That has been established for several years, but we have not celebrated or acknowledged it locally or formally yet, so we'd like to do that for the first time this year. There's a planning committee that will meet this Thursday afternoon and include lots of our stakeholder representatives, including police and fire. And the idea is to have a simple service at the lighthouse on the jetty at Sunrise, which is at 6:35 AM that day, so we'll begin to gather around 6:00. Pamela Bars of the Unitarian Church will share a few words. We have some youth performers who will do some acoustic music, and really, that's it. We'll have a little bit of a resource table near the parking lot, but it'll be a very simple and respectful service for people that want to pay the respects. So that's the idea.
Sounds nice.
Yeah, it sounds really nice, yeah.
That's awesome.
So, thank you, yeah.
How long? Will it last, like 40 minutes?
30 minutes, yeah. 30, maybe 45, with people sticking around. And then we also ordered with our grant funds these pins that will be delivered to our first responders, and I brought these for, I'll leave them with the town administrator's office, for town employees. There's a symbol of a silver ribbon for overdose awareness, so we purchased these, and we'll disseminate them at some of the local businesses. People can pick them up beforehand. We'll determine where this Thursday, and then they'll be available on that August 31st morning, so. Should be a nice day. Nice way to do it.
Very nice.
And that's the idea.
Motion?
Thank you for agreeing.
Thanks.
Move to approve the International Overdose Awareness Day gathering on Wednesday, August 31st, 2016, from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the, sorry, from 5:00 AM to 8:00 AM at the Situate Lighthouse.
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Emery. That's awesome.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have a, we can go, right? 7:40? Yeah, 7:00. Discussion vote on a total outdoor water ban. Kevin Cafferty and Sean Anderson?
Good evening.
How are you folks? Good?
Good evening. As people can tell, it's been awful dry out. The reservoir has been going down pretty significantly. We had gone before you earlier in the year, and we put a ban schedule together of when to enact certain restrictions with the use of outdoor water. We're getting down to about 20%, 28% right now where we are in the reservoir, which is extremely low, and it's brought concerns from the water department, from us also, of our water supply. So what we're going to do is ask for another ban being enacted, which would limit a lot of the water uses. And I'll let Sean talk about that and about what our water storage capacity is and some other questions, if the board has any.
Sure. Thank you for having us.
How are you, Sean?
Good, thanks. Sorry, that's my second time here in just four months, and I'm here with bad news. But we currently have capacity for approximately 30 to 45 days left in the reservoir. And the reservoir is continuing to drop at a rate of 1 half to 1 inch per day.
Wow.
Couple that with a significant lack of rainfall, and, you know, but I looked at the 10-day forecast, and I didn't see much in the next 10 days.
Ah.
I just feel it's, you know, time to look into a full outdoor water ban, protect the drinking water supply and adequate fire protection.
Can you tell us what that includes beyond where we are today with the handheld hose, you know, before 9:00 and after 5:00?
Sure. It would be eliminating that. No handheld hoses, no irrigation of lawns, no filling of swimming pools, no washing of vehicles, except there's exemptions for commercial car washes. The, there are also some mandatory, there's some water uses that are required, for health reasons, for maintenance of livestock, to meet the core functions of a business. And then we added, because we know everyone loves their vegetable gardens, shrubs and plantings, that we will still allow watering, but by watering can only.
Okay.
So that we can, you know, try to, you know, cooperate and try to, you know, recognize that, sorry, recognize that it's very important, you know, the people's plantings and gardens.
Right. It seems like the...
Is coffee in your desk, Sean?
Right.
Right.
The last couple of times, we've had promises of two inches plus, and it just doesn't seem to get to us, you know. It's hit other places, but we haven't seen anything. Well, just a question about the core function of a business. Like, for instance, somebody's in the power washing business. What do you, what do we, what do we say about that?
That is one of the things that are listed here, is not for cleaning, cleaning building surfaces, sidewalks, but I'll let, if you're in a commercial business for that, I'll let you handle that one.
I would think we would take that as a case-by-case when it comes up. Everyone in town has been very good about calling us and letting us know when things are happening in town.
Okay.
We've had our guys out ticketing, well over 75 tickets for anyone who's been abusing the water restrictions. So something like that, I think I would take that on a case-by-case basis.
Sounds pretty scary when you say, would you say 30, 30 days or something?
I think it was 30 to 45.
30 to 45.
45 days.
That's just a scary number.
Have you seen the use go down since we put the last restriction on?
I have. We saw an initial drop right after the 4th of July weekend, but that was a very heavy weekend to begin with. We dropped, I think, 3 and 1/2 or 4 inches in the reservoir that weekend. But since then, the plant has been seeing, has been able to run slower all day long during the 9 to 5 time, but they've been seeing a heavy increase after 5 o'clock, and they've had to run longer into the night.
So, what is that? People watering their lawn when they get home?
At night.
They're doing, allowing them to do, but, yeah, they're watering pretty heavy after 5 o'clock. Now, I don't know if it's just weather or the ticketing that we've done and the cooperation with the police, but the past 3 to 4 days, we've been down about 200,000 to 250,000 gallons a day.
Down, good or bad?
Good. We've been pumping that.
Less, 200, 250,000 gallons a day.
Instead of 2 million gallons a day, we're doing 1.17, 1.75 per day.
Well, I think the best indicator is when people drive on 3A and C, the reservoir's almost nonexistent, so.
It's like a swamp there.
So I think people are just gonna have to take heed to the fact that we're in a dire situation. Have we ever been this low?
In the past, we have been this low, but usually, like last year, we weren't this low until September.
September, yeah.
So that's, that's one of the concerns that we have now.
And Sean mentioned, we're not supposed to rain at all through the rest of this week, and maybe only a touch over the weekend, so it's not gonna fill up on its own. What do we do if we get?
The next step would be, I'd start to reach out. We have two interconnections with other towns. I'd have to talk with them about our emergency connections and see how they're doing with their water supplies.
Do you know that now? How's Marshfield doing or Norwell doing?
I think it's Cohasset we have a connection with, and...
We have a connection with Cohasset.
And it's Norwell, right?
And Norwell, yes.
Cohasset, I don't, I haven't spoken to them personally, but Jimmy went by their reservoir, and he said it looks just as bad or worse than ours does right now.
And Norwell had some issues recently with some lightning. They lost a couple of their wells. They didn't have backup generators for them, so they were at reduced capacity, but those are supposed to be going up again soon within the week. So you, we'd take it as it goes, and one of the other options is, if, say, Pembroke had a lot of water or Marshfield had a lot of water, we could always do what's called wheeling, where you wheel the water right from Marshfield. We don't have an interconnection over the bridge, but you could wheel it to Norwell and then Norwell to us, and we would pay the difference to pay Marshfield and run it through Norwell. So that's another option also.
At what level do you enact that process?
That's, that's a good, good question. The emergency connections, Kevin, I don't know what you would think, but I would say if we're here...
As we get down further, we'd look, we'd look into it. As we get down probably to 10 or 11% capacity, at that point, we would, we're gonna start reaching out to the other towns now and just see what the availability of water is. And we've already, I spoke to Norwell briefly, but I knew they had problems. I checked with them more on what problems they had and what the cause was. It was from a lightning strike. But we will start reaching out to other towns and seeing what capacity is and what type of, what type of backup we could have. We're hoping by doing this restrictions will slow the water usage down enough that, that we will extend that, say, 45 days to even further, because usually near mid-September to the end of September into October, the water starts regenerating. And typically, if we get 1 inch of rain, that's not gonna, you know, recharge the reservoir. It's usually more 4 to 6, probably closer to 6, because the ground's so dry, even when you get an inch of water, it gets absorbed. It never gets into the groundwater table. So some of the things we're, we're looking at, but we are, we are looking at other options if we get that low. We're hoping we don't get to that position.
Okay.
All right, so.
So one of the things that we ask, I'm sorry, and I wasn't clear on this, that when we get to this position in the future, that this is an automatic trigger. So when we get down to 28%, because if we miss, say, a selectmen's meeting, have to wait two weeks, it gets dangerous on our water supply.
Right.
So we'd just like to put it in automatically as a trigger in that chart that we provided you prior, to just kick it in at 28%.
The 30 to 45 days sounds scary to me, so, I mean, that's, you know. Sean?
Couple of things. Private wells, registered wells, they have to adhere to these restrictions as well? Private registered wells?
They do not.
What if, you know, everyone's probably watching, you know, the media's gonna pick up on it. Can you give them any advice? I mean, once a week, I've heard Al say it, and we have, you know, water people sitting behind you. Once or twice a week is sufficient? No.
Elon's brown, and I'm happy with it. I don't have to cut it. But I'd ask, I'd ask John if John wanted to talk about the watering for...
No, someone wants to do the right thing.
They say one day a week?
One day a week.
Is what?
A day a week should be sufficient. The reason why the privately registered wells aren't included is that that's under the purview of the Board of Health. The Board of Health would likely be able to enact that, but you'd have to check with them. But one day a week for watering if you're on a private well should be sufficient according to most of the parameters.
Okay, thanks.
I think that's a good point. Can we put out some guidelines for them as well? Because I...
The Board of Health was working on that.
But can we put them out collectively, so when, you know, whatever we vote, we vote to do, you know, get to the next level of mandatory restrictions, can we also put together some guidelines for the private well owners, so they can help? Even though we can't enforce it, they can at least help us with the situation.
If it wouldn't hurt to reinforce the ask.
Right, that's...
With private well owners.
Yeah.
Could I ask a clarification, because I haven't seen what you have?
Hold on, John. Let me just, so let me get this straight. The reservoir's going, going down, an inch, inch and a half per day. Concern we have is the next 10 days is gonna be bone-dry, which means we could go for maybe another, from 28 inches, I'm sorry, from 28%, we could lose another 10 feet, which, you know, the next 10 days or more.
28%, no, which was a 30 to 45-day supply.
The other question I have is, okay, so the reservoir's going down. What about our wells, though? Are the wells, are the levels of groundwater...
The wells are still pumping.
They're still pumping. So where, how's the aqua, where we're drawing from? I know that's, are you seeing a depletion of our groundwater?
We have seen the levels drop a little bit there. We've had to...
To me, that's kind of more important, because the other thing is, I have no idea with evaporation. I mean, it's been bone-dry anyway, so anything that's pumped into the open reservoir is gonna be lost to the sun during the day. What about the wells? Because those, I think, are more critical, because that's our next resort, am I not? Am I correct?
Correct. Exactly correct.
So where do they stand, if you know? That's what, that's what I'm saying right now.
Currently, they're running 24/7, the wells. All the wells, everything we have.
And I'm saying, do we have a measurement as to, like, where are we in that aquifer?
They're not getting the same yield that they typically would, say, in, you know, in, with a higher water table. The yield's decreased. Do you know the yield on the wells approximately?
I don't have it right in front of me.
I don't mean to put you under, because I know, I'm, that to me is critical.
I know that we've had to drop 20 gallons per minute at at least two of the well sites.
Is that good or bad?
It's bad, because 20 gallons every minute, you know, 20 times 1,440 minutes in a day, that's how much less we're putting into the system, so.
Sean?
And when you go from a well, you don't go to the reservoir, well to the treatment plant, correct?
Well, right into the system.
Right.
Directly into the system.
Okay, all right, okay.
So it doesn't have evaporation?
Right. And I had one other question. Kevin, well, you didn't get it. People ask it all the time. I mean, was, you still see the road going in there? What harm would there be in going out safely, plucking up some of the stumps or some of the big boulders? Would we gain that much?
We would. We'd gain, we'd gain capacity on that. It's something that we had put forward as a study, as a future capital plan.
Okay. Well, I mean, we don't want to be doing it in boats.
Well, no, we can't, we, we can't, we have to get a lot of DEP permits to go out into the reservoir, because, remember, one, one drop of diesel or one drop of hydraulic fluid will contaminate the whole, the whole reservoir, so we have to be really careful on that. And what we'd probably have to do is shut down the whole reservoir, isolate it, go to complete well systems, and then do the excavation. And Sean and I were actually talking about it, and probably going out there tomorrow to look. There's a road section that goes out there where there's actually, they must have used it to haul a lot of the material out when they built it, and we figured we could gain a lot of capacity by removing that. But as I said, you, you need a lot of permitting to do that, and it's something that we're looking for in the future.
Sean, you had an additional clarification question?
I was asking for a clarification, because I'm not sure what you have in your packet. I saw a draft that said Sean introduced the fact that people could still use handheld for their gardens, but is that still with the odd even, as I say, every other day? Or is that...
Martin, yeah, there's a watering can.
It was no handheld hoses, John. It just went down to use of watering cans for vegetable gardens, flowers, and shrubs.
All right, thank you.
And is that before 9:00 and after 5:00, or is that any time?
It was any time if you were using a watering can.
What about boats? You know, people in the marinas probably are using it, probably their engines are watering it down. I'm just, do we have information for the marinas to know what they cannot be doing?
We would, we would ask if somebody, you know, we understand, and we could, we could bring it back to the board. I mean, if people have, have an engine and they run saltwater through it, obviously, they want to run some fresh water, and that's understandable just to maintain the engine. We're on a seaside community, but we would ask, I mean, at least myself, I would suggest that we do the bare minimum on the cleaning, that nobody spends 2 hours cleaning their boat. Maybe give it a quick rinse and run some fresh water through the engine, but don't go crazy with it. You know, and we'd push that back if you guys want to do a full ban on it or not, you know, however that would go, but that'd be my suggestion.
Sean, can you do us a favor? Like, I want to hear more about John's point about the wells. Is there anything you could put some data together for us, send it to Trish, and she'll email it out to us?
Absolutely.
Just so we can know the yields are there and know what, what the barometer is for that?
Yes, John?
John Clarkson, Chairman of the Water Resources Committee. We are in a difficult situation, and I do hope that you'll vote in approval of Sean's motion, but we also want to thank the people of the community who have cooperated with the early restrictions to this point. I suppose it's silly to say we're thankful we're on August 1st and not July, July 1st having this discussion, but in fact, to those who have filed the restrictions so far, thank you. To those who have not, and there are some who continue not to, we ask you to please reconsider your position and understand the importance of these, of these restrictions.
Thank you, John. Chair, may I?
Mr. Taylor, have a question.
Just as far as enforcement, is the water department, Kevin, going or Steve going out, looking at it? And if not, or if they are...
The department goes out certain days a week, and they'll go out early at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning and do some searching.
In conjunction with that, is there a possibility, are the police department at least doing the same during their rounds? I mean, I think a lot of the, I would assume offenders would be probably in the off-hours.
So the police department snaps a picture and reports it in the log, and then that information's transferred to the water department?
Okay.
And Sean and Kevin, to impose these restrictions, what, we're gonna impose the ban until when? Until the reservoir gets back to a certain point? You know, what's, what's the stop date here?
We'd say it gets back up till 20, 29%. So it gets over that 28% threshold.
29?
We implemented it at 28%, so we would say as soon as it goes over the 28%, we would, we would restrict, we'd remove that ban.
Really? Well, how fast does it take to, how long does it take to go right back down?
An inch a day.
Yeah.
If it's not raining, right?
Well...
I think our point is...
Shouldn't it be, like, higher, like, maybe 35%?
Well, it depends. I mean, we'd use common sense. If, if we've got, like, 6 inches of rain coming and we're at 28%, we could lift it. If we've got a drought and it shows 2 weeks, we're not gonna remove it for a day and then put it back on. We'd, you know, We'd, you know, we'll use just common sense the best we can. Um, it won't be an instant, oh, it's up by a tenth of an inch, and then switch it back, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. So do we stay until the, the water department deems the level is appropriate? I'm just trying, we don't have a motion in front of us, so I'm just trying to craft something that people can follow.
Yeah, the motion would be, once, once the rate get over the 28 percent, and you could say until...
Thirty-nine. Then we'll be lifted when it, 35 feet, 39 percent full.
Okay.
Where's the motion, Phil?
So, um, on the, on the sheet that you have, there's an action sought.
All right, there we go. Thank you. It's not on the electronic copy, so thanks.
A motion, Mar?
Sure. I move that the Board of Selectmen allow the Department of Public Works to implement a full outdoor water use ban when the level of the reservoir reaches 34 feet. Is that what that is? Doesn't make sense to me. Is that it? Is that what you want?
And then, the second part says a ban will be lifted when the elevation of the reservoir restores to the elevation 35 feet, which is 39 percent full, the one foot over that.
Oh, I see, okay. The ban will be lifted when the elevation of the reservoir restores to elevation of 35 feet, which is 39 percent full.
I'll second that motion. Second by Mr. Danahue. Further discussion?
Quick question. Um, I think this is right, but I'd like to be corrected if I'm wrong. We're not talking about removing all the bans, we're talking about going backwards from the most severe ban only to the least next step. So it would still mean only hoses only before nine and after five.
That's correct.
So you're not removing all the bans, you're only backing up a little bit.
Right.
That's correct.
Correct.
Does that need to be part of, it's just understood?
I think it means...
No, I think it's understood at the levels that we've already approved previously. Yeah. In my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
Police client, 675 Chief Justice. How much would it cost to truck in water? Should we hit that level? How much is it going to cost the town to go ahead and transport water or get water to augment what we call, or meet the needs of the...
The DPW said the next step is to go to our surrounding communities where we're hooked up into them and buy water from them. And if they don't have it, go a town further away and ship it through them. So you wouldn't actually truck water in?
We'd actually pipe it in.
How much would that cost the town?
Um, an awful lot of money, because you're only gonna, you're only gonna transport like 8,000 gallons at a time, because it's, it's, you know, the weight per gallon. So it's a lot of trucks going in and out.
It's a tough situation.
If I can answer that, we, we do that for Humrock right now. We, we wheel the water into Humrock. We don't have, the water system's not connected to Humrock. So we purchase it off Marshfield to supply Humrock. So it'd be the same as that. We'd be charged the same rates that we pay now for the rates that we use for the Humrock water.
Okay.
I think we pay them $300,000 a year. I think that's what we pay Marshfield for Humrock, so...
It's like three times the amount that we're paying right now. Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And hope for rain.
All right, we're gonna go back to the report of the Town Administrator. Trish, yeah?
Thank you.
Christie, you'll make that front page news?
Sure.
So, quick update on the library. Things continue to move along. The library's at 50 percent completion after the difficulties and challenges we had with the roof removal redesign and reconstruction. Things are really on track. The computer cabling and furniture fixtures and equipment are all being researched now and final decisions made. The color schemes have been decided. There is a photography contest out there that I want to give a plug for, for resident photo submissions to, to adorn the signage all throughout the library. If you can get by there to sort of see it before the ceiling starts to go in, it really looks quite beautiful with the, the ceiling. It's a very attractive building. Um, I'm gonna skip the public safety complex detail, except to say the project is going amazingly well. The good weather has helped all the municipal projects, and the Public Building Commission is doing a great job bi-weekly reviewing all the project status. And you can see that building really taking shape now if you, you drive by. I do want to address some concerns that we heard about the fire at Go Green. I, I wanna assure the board and the residents that that site has been regulated, and as recently as last fall, there was an environmental engineer that conducted a study there as to its operations. That being said, clearly Chief Murphy and I have had discussions about the fires there, especially during this water shortage. We used between 15,000 and 20,000 gallons out there last week. Chief Murphy's had conversations with Mr. Lopes, and we will be continuing those discussions. And I'm happy to answer any other questions on that. I want to give a plug for the flood information workshop that's being held at St. Mary's on August 2nd. This is one in a series of many, many educational workshops we do through the town to advise coastal residents about flood insurance, foreshore protection, safety, the elevation grants, and the like. And today we got notification that the presentation that you had a few weeks ago with Peter Costalito, that plan was approved and accepted in record time. So our hazard mitigation plan is good for five years, and it's been approved. So much kudos to Nancy Durfee, Laura Harbottle, and the town staff team that worked on those matters. Um, in the interest of time, I will conclude my report.
Quick question. Jim, I don't know if you looked at it, but I know with Go Green, you know, given the drought situation, you know, and if fires keep continuing, because my understanding is they've been happening fairly regularly, is there some kind of provision in the contract that we could take a look at? Act of God, I mean, with a water drought? There's no way we can continue to put water on these fires that happen almost every other week, to me. I, I just think it's, because I saw it last week. I came out of my office, and literally the entire smoke, it smelled like, I thought it was something in my office, and I walked around, I talked to somebody down in Green Bush, and they're like, I don't know what's going on. You could see the whole smoke, because the wind was blowing, you know, from the river to Green Bush, and I was amazed. Then somebody said, Green, Go Green, and I was like, wow, must have been a fairly large fire. But it just happened to be the way the wind was going.
Do you bring an environmental consultant in to make sure that every solid waste regulation was being applied with, didn't find any violations, and there's practices that could be improved? Mr. Lopes was wonderful at that point in terms of moving things and making adjustments. We have had some discussions about potential responsibility for some of the town's costs, but it's really...
Tim's a great guy. I have no problems with that, just, I haven't seen, this is happening so much.
We have billed him, and we will bill him for this. We have billed him in the past, and we will bill him for the costs for fire response. And Chief Murphy and I were exchanging information about that today.
All right. Again, I have nothing, he's a business, he's a great guy, just with all the water shortage that we have, I'm like, it's such a waste if, if the material keeps piling up, because it's spontaneous. That stuff keeps cooking and baking, and that's why it's, it's causing all these fires. He's gotta keep it low.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Certainly.
Um, Trish, with the public safety building, you were able to talk to the OPM, right, about the 7:00 AM start time?
Yes, that was addressed right away, and they notified all the contractors. And we're given the same information that we've given to folks to idle in the MBTA parking lot.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Nope, that's it.
So I've got a, a statement that I'd like to read. Is everybody okay with the statement?
Make a motion.
Yeah. Have the motion to accept statement from the Board of Selectmen in regards to the Ellis property.
Move to accept the motion on the statement you're reading regarding the Ellis estate.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. This is a statement of the Board, City of Board of Selectmen regarding Attorney General's inquiry into the status of the Ellis estate. Earlier this evening, this board had a meeting and executive session with Town Council to discuss issues relative to the Ellis estate. This discussion was precipitated by recent activities by a small group of individuals who contacted the Office of the Attorney General regarding the town's public safety complex on land formerly under the care and custody of the school committee. Evidently, these individuals contend that the transfer was either not proper or that the town acted inconsistently with the state statute relative to this parcel. While we have and I will continue to discuss this legal matter in executive session, we feel it is important to discuss facts with the public in an open session. First, some history. In 1969, City residents at town meeting appropriated $146,000 in funds for the purchase of 101 acres of land from the Ellis estate. The land was deeded to the town to be managed and controlled by the Conservation Commission. Shortly following that, the Conservation Commission voted, as required by the state statute, to transfer a portion of that land, 40 acres, to the care and custody of the school committee. The transfer was approved by City residents at the 1970 town meeting. In 1994, 16 acres was transferred back to conservation. The remaining acreage has been under school committee control since then, despite two subsequent town meetings that endeavored to re-transfer the land back into conservation. Over the years, this property has been considered for public uses other than conservation. In December of 2014, after being voted by the school committee in 2013, Town Meeting approved the transfer of six acres on the Ellis parcel for the construction of the public safety complex. The location of the public safety complex on Route 3A site was determined as the best site after feasibility study was undertaken by Dorian Whittier on these, on three sites. Prior to this, a public forum was held in June of 2012 at the City Harbor Community Building, informing residents of the town's intent and specifically mentioning the Ellis parcel. Since 2012 and leading up to the December 2014 town meeting, there were multiple public meetings and presentations on this project, in addition to an educational campaign prior to the ballot questioning approving the project. Each time the project went before voters, it was approved. It is important for you, the residents of City, to know that over the past four decades, each and every time any discussion went before voters about the use of this parcel, it was reviewed by the town's legal counsel. There's a legal opinion from 1977 from Town Council Edward Ryan, laying out the proper process for transfer and the town's appropriate actions. There was a legal opinion from 1994 from Town Council Barbara St. Andre, reaffirming the town's actions, and there was a review and guidance from Town Council Jim Toomey for the transactions at the April 2013 and the December 2014 town meetings. The board would like to clarify inaccurate statements by a small, small number of individuals that there was confusion over the project and what the town was asking voters to approve. Two separate ballot questions, one for the school and one for the public safety complex were presented before town voters, both completely independent of one another. The vote in December of 2014 was a culmination of three years of work at regularly posted public meetings, viewable on cable and anytime on YouTube. And a comprehensive, independent educational campaign by the Yes for SMS and also Yes for Public Safety Organization. While the board understands not every resident supported the project, the board made every opportunity for the public to be informed and participate about the project. We are further dismayed that the information circulated with a proposed warrant article for the coming fall special town meeting, which states that the town submitted documents to the Attorney General, and the town maintains that because local taxpayer money only was used to purchase the property, the town has the right to transfer the land in and out of conservation anytime. In point of fact, no such representation was made. We have provided a significant number of information, a significant amount of information to the Attorney General's Office culminating in a meeting with the Assistant Attorney General on June 28, 2016. The meeting was held with Town Council Jim Toomey, Selectman John Danahue, and Town Administrator Patricia Van Kessie, along with Assistant Attorney General Carol Ianaku and Alicia Pradish Mong. At the June 28, 2016 meeting, Assistant Attorney General Carol Ianaku indicated her office was of the opinion that legislative approval should have been obtained before the six acre parcel was committed for the public safety complex. The town represents strongly, representative strongly disagreed with that assessment based on the legal opinions of our current Town Council and prior Town Councils in 1994 and 1997, as well as case law. In an effort to be conciliatory, the parties agreed to temporarily put aside their legal disagreements to explore how the impasse might be resolved. The Assistant Attorney General Ianaku suggested a resolution of placing additional land under conservation restrictions. At the present time, the town of City has 940 acres of land in conservation. This represents 14 percent of the town's total acreage of 6,715. After this review, the board feels that the town has complied with the letter and spirit of the law, that all town actions leading to the construction of the public safety complex comply with all legal requirements, and it is hopeful that upon receipt of additional information recently supplied to the Assistant Attorney General, the Assistant Attorney General will agree with that position. The Mariner editorial in the July 28, 2016 paper stated in part, "It's easy to go online and post comments that spew hate over festivals, ideas, people, whatever. We see a lot of comments from people who clearly aren't going to meetings, reading articles or otherwise getting sourced information before they post. This board will continue to provide correct information to the public and will continue to work with the cooperative, work cooperatively with the Assistant Attorney General to address her concerns." Thank you. Okay. Any, any questions from the audience at all? On the statement or anything to do? Yes, just a name and address, please.
Phyllis Crowe, 26 Hughes Road. I from one, and I've told you guys this before, not that I'm a, whatever, let me continue. I attended five of the sessions for the school that were provided for the local residents as educational meetings and four for the safety center. Now, because there were so many different people, there were gonna be different questions, I was really gonna educate myself so that I knew exactly what was gonna happen. To my knowledge, I don't remember anything about them talking about a land swap when it came time for taking Ellis property and moving it over. Now, how, how, how can you say that things weren't, you know, 100 percent clear to people when I attended multiple ones and never heard anything about a land swap?
I don't know what you're...
Land swap? I'm not sure what you're meaning by a land swap. It was voted at town meeting for the, actually, the school committee voted to, what was the date of that? I don't have that in front of me. Jim, do you remember?
2013.
Yeah, 2013. To assign the land over to the town of City for the use for the public safety building.
That was involved with vote of putting the school on, in the safety center on that property.
Yes.
With a double whammy.
Well, there was an...
And that was not advertised.
Let me finish, Phyllis, if you would. So there was an initial vote, and at the time, the school wasn't sure. That was a possible site for the Gates School. So the, the school committee at that time wanted to maintain control. When, when it was determined that the Gates School was going to go where it is now, then that land became available. That was voted, and it was, became property of the town of City. That was not at the exact same time. That was prior to.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to add that language in that annual town meeting article also stipulated that with that land transfer, Phyllis, if, if the town didn't approve to move forward with a public safety building within, I think it was a three-year timeframe, that it would revert back.
Back to the school.
So there were contingencies built into that motion that was on the floor and passed.
I realize it passed by 300 and some odd people, but I think that there's a lot of people that, well, that's my 50 cents worth. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I have a comment.
Name an address, if you would, please.
675 Chief Justice...
Sure.
I remember at one particular town meeting a number of years ago, and Sean, I don't know if you remember this, Ralph Grossen came up, and he wanted to put a skating rink there. And people went bonkers. I remember Larry Gates, he got up and he said, this is not, he knew the Ellis estate, and he said, this is not what the purpose of the property was for. And the purpose of the property was so that people would, wouldn't be able to enjoy nature and be able to appreciate the green space. We also had innumerable meetings to go ahead and talk about the future plans of the town of City. What a waste of time that was, because you guys certainly are not keeping this space green. And that's what I have to say.
You read the deed earlier? You read it earlier? I just wanted to address part of that. Ralph Grossen ran his campaign on a sports complex that included ice, swimming pools, and fields. Okay? You know, that was almost 20 years ago. John, you read it earlier tonight, what the intent from the family was?
So let's get it straight, the facts. When the Ellis's actually sold it to the town, they sold it to the town for the purposes of the estate. And actually, in a Western Union telegram from 1968 by Mr. Walter Ellis, he stated that the family felt for years that the small portion adjoining Situate Town Force should become ultimately a part of the force future. That's the part across the road, okay? And that's where it is. It's next to the town force, nobody's touched it. And then they said, "We feel likewise and would like to see the town of Situate develop the entire track on a long-range basis into school, into park, parks, playgrounds, and perhaps someday even a hospital." So the Ellis's were not, excuse me, the Ellis's not at the time that they transferred it to the town in 1970, ever said, "Oh, it's got to be deeded into conservation." It was only deeded into the Conservation Commission back in 1969. There is no restriction on the deed. The land was deeded, excuse me, I'm just explaining the facts here, on the registry of deeds. The deed into the Conservation Commission in 1969 just was deeded to it. There's no conservation restriction, there's no covenant that says, "Oh, this has to be for conservation," or "It should be for low use and for trails or anything." In fact, the town council in 1968 or 69 also turned around and said, "Guess what? Conservation, you can actually deed this over to the school committee." This is not us. This is the town council and the people for the Board of Selectment, for the Planning Board, and also the Conservation. Your own town council in 1968 said it. Then in 1977, he wrote another opinion saying the same thing again, advising this town and the people at town meeting exactly what they could do with the land. But if that's not good enough, in 1994, town council yet again opined or gave the opinion that, guess what? You can do what you want if it's in the school committees, you can deed it back to the conservation. In fact, in 1994, 16 acres went back to conservation. But the bottom line is, the remaining 16 acres that you're talking about, or 14 acres, it's owned by the school committee. They control it. It's been there since 1970. There's no restriction in the deed. So, you know, there's a lot of innuendo and a lot of misinformation out there that's being pushed around because it's opinion. These are all facts, these are all documents here in town. You folks are free to have them. It's freedom of information, we'll give them to you. But this is nothing that this board has been trying to like hide or try to misinform, misinform people. We put many meetings together. I don't know if you went to any of them, maybe you did. Maybe you went to the town meetings, maybe you went to all of them. I don't know. But you know what? This board has been very clear with the intent, it's been clear with the school committee, it's been clear with the public.
And on top of that, to say that this town, or this board isn't in support of green stuff, we just read numbers here.
14% of our land.
Almost 1,000 acres in our town.
Past 13 years, 13-
Conservation.
Past 13 years, we've put in over 500 acres into, into the West End for green space. 500 acres through CPC funding, over $5 million. You, me, everybody who's gone to town meeting have put, most recently, even this past annual town meeting, we put another, for the, what is it, not the Damon Property, the Maxwell Trust. So there's a lot of green space out there, and just six acres were cut down for a public safety building. Not for school, it was for, for police and for fire.
In playgrounds, in all manner of things that you're building on, wetlands. We're talking about an issue with the town water supply, and here, you're going ahead and you're putting on, you're, you're talking about building fields, you're talking about putting more buildings in there, and your land doesn't even perk.
There is a plan right now that's being built. There's no fields there, it's a public safety building. It's for the fire department that's going to help people in the West End, it's going to help people in North Situate, it's going to have an ambulance, it's going to actually have a emergency, what do you call it, triage center, so that people go there before, you know, if they, because of the, the concept of coming closer to Situate for emergent, urgent care. Then you have an emergency oper, excuse me, let me finish, please. There's an emergency operating center there, so that during the times of the urgency, for people who live down in my neck of the woods, on the coast, who have to go through that horrible, horrible nor'easters, you know what we have to, for people, like our fire chief, like our police chief, like all our first responders in the Department of Public Works and the people going down there, we can at least orchestrate it in a safe environment as opposed in the back of a fire truck while the snow's coming down and the wind's blowing or electrical, oh, you can make faces all you want, you know? But the reality is, you know what? You can reasonably disagree. These are facts, and if anybody here disagrees with them, so be it. Then show us the facts, because that's what this board is here, because people are actually insulting us, saying that we are misinforming, just like Phyllis said, misinforming the public. Absolutely not. These are all here, we're happy to produce them.
Excuse me, John. You say that you're going to be triaging people in this, what, center?
Yep.
All right. You're going to be triaging the what? With paramedic? You're bringing people in there and you're going to assess them? Are you, the town, going to pay for all this medical personnel that would go into triaging and stabilizing somebody so that they can make an ambulance trip back? Is that what you're talking about?
You have a situation where somebody could be driving along in the area? There's a triage center there, we're so far from a hospital. It's just a great, it's a good idea, and public safety buildings that are being built now, they, they do include those.
Are you going to pay for that? The town's going to pay for that kind of personnel? Wow. You guys must have deep pockets.
You know what? I take great umbrage with that. You know what? You must just come here just to ridicule us. Is that really what you hear, Mrs. Klein? Because you know what? I don't have deep pockets, I just care about my community and I care about the fact that it's a 25-minute commute by the time they pick me up in my house, bring me to the South Shore Hospital, if I have a heart attack or a stroke, I can only pray to God that I'm going to get there and I'll be safe. And thank heavens through the paramedics, yes, paramedics. I'm very happy that we have paramedics in this town, because that's going to save many lives. And you know what? They've been, just like this poor woman last week, let me tell you, she's very thankful because we did have paramedics, it saved her life.
And to answer your question, it's the paramedics that are in the station that would be helping people.
Any doctors?
No. Paramedics, 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 paramedics and EMTs, so. Anybody else? Yes?
My, Patricia Everett, under 14 hours in your place, and I am one of the people that wrote the warrant. So, while I don't like the safety complex there, I voted against you. My portion is not to take that out because we cannot afford that. Our request, our petition is to turn the other 14 acres back to conservation. That's all we're asking for, that they don't develop, that we know the school department has it, we're fully aware of that. And while we want to contain everything, we can't. I mean, that's just the way it goes, that vote won, we did not win, sometimes win, sometimes lose, and we lost that debate. So we need to move along with what it is that we still have, and we want to preserve the other 14 acres that are to the petition that I am circulating is about, not to take down the safety complex at all.
That I respect, because I think that's a fair assessment in trying to preserve public land. I appreciate that.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's really out of their control now, right? Now the Attorney General is going to decide what happens. And we could have $100,000 worth of legal bills to fight a situation, and the Attorney General could decide what the outcome is, regardless of what you want, right? You, you started this chain of events and you're kind of painting a picture that things were done disingenuously, and, well, maybe not you, but people are, right? And the facts are here. I mean, we have legal opinion on almost everything that we do here is of a big nature, and now the course is going to take what it takes, and it's going to cost the town a lot of money.
Well, I, I will work that in. One, what will happen is that it comes back to what we're going to talk to as the original intent, and I understand that it was up to conservation to do whatever. I'm also aware that Article 97, which protects property, was not in existence when this piece of property was given to the town. I too have done my homework, I have parts in case law as well. So while we are aware of that, what people really, my opinion and my feeling is that people really feel that it's not, it's not what happened, it's kind of like the unspoken intent, that while we do have all this property, and yes, unfortunately, some of it has been developed, that your intent might be that no matter what happens, you're going to do whatever you want, which we know is not true, because everything has to go through town meeting. So people in my position have to make sure we get the vote out to say yes or no. And that certainly was a learning curve for us when the middle school passed and when the safety complex passed. So we learned our lesson, so we're working hard to make sure if this petition does go forward, that people do come out of support, that that 14 acres come out of the school and back into conservation.
And you know that that's, twice that's tried to happen?
Yes, I know.
And both times it failed.
But I think because maybe there wasn't enough information, I mean, so we can all be-
There's two sides, there's two sides to doing it. I mean, we're not opposed to green stuff, green communities, but if you take it out of conservation, there's an, there's an impact that it has, and you lose an asset of the town.
I absolutely agree with that, but I've also just read the master plan, which you did pass, which says that you are really committed to maintaining the green space, which they call the 3A Greenway, which goes from the tile line to green bush. So with the few houses and light money between, so I can sit here and argue, well, I'm trying to, I have absolutely no intent that I don't like that piece of property being developed, but what has happened, has happened. What we're hoping is that nothing further is developed on that property. Okay?
Yes.
Just a quick question. I didn't hear it during my reading that. So is the town's stance that there's no mitigation going on right now between the town and the Attorney General?
Right now, there's, they, it's all discussions right now, so it's, it's early stage. They've kind of put that out there, that that's the direction they'd like to go in, and our opinion right now is that we did nothing wrong.
I mean, everything's above board?
But we aren't at the stage where there's been any, where they've said, "Do this," or, "And we'll make it go away," type stuff.
Okay. Everybody's all set?
And as John said, all these are public documents, so if you can-
I have a book, I'll just, I'll give you that.
Yes, sir.
P20208 in La Brea, just a quick follow-up. Any speculation as to when we might go back from the Attorney General?
No.
Tough to speculate at this point, really.
Your Honor, thank you.
I would think somewhere probably in fall, September or so.
I wouldn't even want to speculate.
No, I think that's a fair assessment. I think, you know, I've met with them, we talked to them, I think you, here in the fall at some point.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on. We have an eight o'clock update on the middle school project from Shane Nolan.
Just outside, I think, but.
Michael's probably saying, right?
Mike's going to, he hasn't, why, can you get him?
Shane out there?
Or Jones.
Yeah, I know, for listening close.
More.
How are you, Shane?
Do we have one?
How are you doing?
We have three extra coffees.
I passed them all down there.
Shane, thank you. Do you want one of these?
I made the extra coffees.
I need to keep one for, um, thank you, Shane.
Hi, thank you.
I need to keep one for, um, yeah.
That's okay. I just wanted to give one to him. I already wrote online.
Yes, I know.
Thank you. Do you need the other one?
Yep.
Okay, we are.
We are.
Okay, so we were asked to come tonight to give you an update on the, the middle school project, the new Gate School. So I handed out, that's the template of the, the monthly project report we give to the school building committee. So I'll just bring you through that quickly, let you know where we are. The diagram on the right-hand side there, that's the, the existing building, the white portion within the box is the existing high school, and the shaded part with the letters are the, the parts of the middle school and the auditorium are doing. So just bring you through where we are with construction to date. The high school art wing and the, the high school nurses suite, which was some enabling work that we had to do early on in the project, so that, that's now complete. It was finished last April, and the high school art department moved in there when they came back from April vacation. We're still doing some commissioning work and some punch list work this summer. There was a couple of things that we couldn't do, but we're going to get that done over the summer before the kids come back in September. The auditorium, which is Area G at the back of the building, and the utility building, Area H, the structural steel is up and complete there, masonry is about 90% complete. The framing contractor is then installing the metal framing up at the power pits, up at the roof level, and the demolition and renovation of Area H is ongoing. Area H is that old boiler room at the back of it, so we're going to, there's, there's no longer boilers in there, but it still has the high school electric service, so we're going to demolish about half that building and leave the, the electric service in there. Main part of the building, the middle school, A, B, C, D, E, and E, demolition is complete now, we, we got a lot of that done in the spring and got the remaining portions of that done while the kids were out this summer. The foundations are, are complete in A, B, and C, and D, and E, I think we actually did a last pour today, so that's pretty much done now, all the foundation work. Structural steel, as I'm sure you've seen, has been ongoing. A and B is complete, C is ongoing, and D and E will follow that. So we've been getting daily deliveries down from Canada, and they've been putting that steel up. Slab and grade has been poured in, in Area A and B, and also the first, or the second floor slab has been poured there. So that's, that's to let a lot of the trades come in, to start doing their rough work, the mechanical, electric, plumbing, fire protection, and that kind of work. Masonry contractors begins, begun CMU at the areas A, B, and C, those are the stair towers, and the framing contractor has started to install the light gauge and other framing at Areas A, B, and C, and the dense glass material, that's the yellow material you might have seen going up, they've started that in A. So the, the schedule is to, to start today and work their way around A, B, C, and then into D, and E. Site work, they've been very busy this summer with the kids out, we pretty much took over the, the whole site. They've completed the subsurface infiltration systems, two and three, they're just wrapping up number one around the back of the building. Utility installation is ongoing, they, they brought in the new electric service, and they've had to bring that all the way around the building from, from that H building all the way around to the, almost to the tennis courts there where we're going to pop into the, the new middle school. Binder paving has been put in at the new bus loop for the high school here, and also at the drop-off at the, the back of the building, and curbing is ongoing right now. Some of the anticipated progress, as I said, we, we expect to finish commissioning and punch list items before the kids come back in September of that high school art wing and the nurses suite. The auditorium will finish up the CMU walls, they should actually, in fact, start doing the, the brickwork pretty soon on that. They'll continue with the light gauge metal framing, they'll prep for the slab on grade, will pour that concrete slab. Again, that will allow a lot more trades in the MEPs to start their rough work. Demolition of that H building will be complete, and we'll build those exterior walls and enclose that building. The middle school, we're completing the backfilling around the building so that we have a, a route, the hallway 360 around that building. The electric service and the plumbing will continue in Areas A, B, I'm sorry, C, D, and E, that's all the underground, which will allow us to pour the slabs. Structural steel will be completed in C, and will begin in D, and E. The ironworkers come in and they, they do what they call detailing, so what they do is they put the steel up, they put it all up, and then before they tighten the bolts, if you like, they have to make sure it all fits, because they don't want that last piece to, to be too long or too short. And then, as I said, I think today they actually poured that last foundation in, in Area D, and E. Site work, they're going to do a lot more work in August and get all that site work wrapped up, and we'll get the, the bus loop and the parking around the back, back open for the kids. When they come back, we'll also get, get rid of the dirt that's out here, which was used, that area that was used for temporary parking for the high school kids, that'll be back up and, and open for the kids in September. Project schedule, so, so as you know, we, we issued a notice to proceed to Agostini Bacon Construction in December. The contract duration was 520 days, it was broken up into phases. Phase one was that high school art and, and high school nurses area, which, which opened in April on time. Phase two, 2A, which is the, the middle school, and phase two B, which is part of the middle school also, those are both on schedule right now and expected to be finished by July 24, 2017, so around this time next year. First day of school in 2017, when we'll open the middle school is September 8. So we, we have a little bit of, a little bit of a buffer there, which is when we'll furnish the school, we'll do all the final commissioning in the middle school and be ready for the kids in September 2017. Phase two C is what we call the, the summer work we're doing right now, so they're going to get that wrapped up by August 25 and get that ready for school opening in September 6. We'll have that new bus loop, we'll have a lot of the, the new paving done, and a lot of new sidewalks and stuff around the school. And then finally, the Performing Arts Center, the auditorium, that's, that's on schedule to be finished by the end of the year. Again, we'll, we'll finish construction of that, and then there'll be some commissioning and furnishing to do, so that, that, that will be ready for use probably the end of January of 2017. Just a couple of notes, the general contractor has indicated that their schedule is impacted by, by some additional work. There, there is a process to go through if they want an extension of time, they haven't submitted anything formally to say they were going to look for that, so right now their, their baseline schedule shows them finishing on time. No extensions of time have been approved to date, so we're, we're on schedule for that July 24, 2017. Project costs, on the third page there, as you know, we, we got very favorable bids back in December. The original contract value was just under $52.6 million with Agostini Construction. We've had four change orders to date, totaling about $480,000 or $450,000 to, to bring the contract value currently to just over $53 million. There's currently 29 proposed change orders out there, so as, as changes occur, the contractor submits those, we review them, and then we bring them to the building committee when we're ready to recommend them. There's also 24 potential changes being tracked, so, so as things come up, you know, whether we hear something in the field, whether there's an RFI, whether there's something at our weekly meetings that, that comes up, we, we track that where there might be a potential change, just so we know that, hey, this might be coming down the line from the contractor, and we're, we're aware, and we try and keep, you know, the school aware and the building committee aware of, of potential changes. I've just noted, you know, a project this size, a $53 million job, the change orders are, we, we've gotten about the number we would expect to this, to see at this stage. Um, the pricing has been pretty fair by, by the general contractor and the, uh, the subs. There's been really no, uh, no disputes in any, any, you know, legitimate change orders. We've been able to negotiate a, uh, a fair and reasonable price for all of them.
What was the total contingency?
Um, the original contingency was just under two point six million. Um, but I, I'll talk about that in, in, in a moment.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, so just, yeah, I just noted that, you know, the proposed change orders are reviewed every week at our, our weekly project meetings. Um, ourselves, the architect, uh, sometimes people from the school and the general contractor sit down and we try and, we try and hit those and, uh, get them agreed to and get them onto a formal change order, uh, so they're not hanging out there. Um, just under the project issues or discussions, uh, we like to bring these up with the school building committee, just, you know, what, what's going on out there. Um, so, so MSBA, um, if you remember a long time ago, we signed the, the, the project funding agreement after schematic design. So, so that was what, what set the budget for the project. It was seventy-five point seven five million. And that was, uh, what was approved at town meeting, uh, last January. Um, part of the funding agreement, there's a bid amendment. So we, we had a budget price for, for construction. When we get the actual hard bids in, they, they amend that, that budget based on, on, on the real prices. So as you know, we were, we were almost, uh, eight and a half million dollars under budget on, on bid day. So we, we've been working with MSBA to do that bid amendment. So what we proposed is to move some of those bid savings in, into our contingency. So to bring that contingency from, from two point five million up to four million. Just to, 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 to give us some, some, some more, uh, comfort in, in, in the contingency for unforeseen's and, and the like. Um, we also, we also...
Is that, do we have to do that?
We, we, we don't have to. Um, it, it makes good sense because again, we're, we're setting that budget and we really can't go over that. So if we, if we did hit the two point five million in, in contingency, then we would have to go back to, to MSB again and renegotiate the, the budget. So it gives us that comfort factor. Um, I, I don't think we're gonna hit that four million.
It's funny how contingencies always seem to get to whatever number you put in that bucket.
Um, they, they, they have a funny way, but you know, we, we, we manage them and, you know, if we didn't think we were gonna do the, the project in the first place for the two and a half million, we, we wouldn't have brought that to you last, in two thousand fourteen, I think we brought it to you.
I mean, what's a typical contingency for a project?
Percentage?
About five percent, which is, which is what we were carrying at, at the original budget.
Yeah.
And we're, we're up around seven percent now.
And the school committee, the building committee voted to increase that contingency amount?
We, we, we've looked at it. We're gonna bring it to them next week. We, we, we just got that amendment approved by MSBA. We got that yesterday. So we've been working with them for a couple of months, and, uh, we just got it yesterday.
So at this point with the proposed change orders and plus what you've already got in here, we're pretty, pretty close to three quarters of a million dollars, right?
Uh, we're, we're about that. I think we're about one point, one point five percent of, of the original value, so. And as I said, it, it's typical, they're, they're really, there, there was a lot of unforeseen's up front, just, you know, with demolition. Uh, you know, there was some stuff underground that we had to take care of. Now that we're up out of the ground, we're, we're putting the steel up. We would hope the pace of those would slow down, but, but there's always gonna be, you know...
Most, most of it is straightforward at that point, I imagine, right?
Uh, it, it, it is, yeah. Um, you know, the big, biggest risk is, in, in, in construction is, is demolition or excavation. What, what you're gonna find behind a wall or what you're gonna find in the ground that, that you haven't been able to see. Um, so, so we're, as I said, we're working through that. We got that yesterday. We've reviewed it. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna bring it to the building committee next week and, uh, and get that approved. And then, then go back to, uh, to MSBA and, and hopefully get that amendment done.
So you're at two point six and now you're moving it to four. Is there something that, I know you have to go through the machinations with the MSBA to get that approval. Was there was something compelling that made you increase it by one point six at this time, one point four?
There, there, there wasn't any, any single thing. Uh, you know, we did, as I said, we, we, we hit a few unforeseen's at the beginning of the project. And, and you can see there were some big change orders at the beginning. Um, I think to go from, from five percent to seven percent is not unreasonable. Uh, given that there is a, there was a, you know, is a, was a renovation portion, a demolition portion. Five percent, um, as you remember, when we, when we agreed on that budget was, was tight. And it was, it was for new construction, which essentially this, eighty percent of this is new construction.
There were members of our building committee who were, who were basically saying it was too low. That our contingency was too low, so, um, our original one...
The original one, yeah, we, we raised it at that, that building committee meeting when we, we agreed to PFA. Um, and, and we've talked about it, and as I said, if, if we don't use it, we don't use it. Um, but, you know, in saying that, uh...
You just said we got through the tough time, and we're only at one point five percent.
Right.
So we should be under the five percent when all said and done.
Um, I, I, I hope we are.
Why do I sense Shane that there's something out there you're not telling us? I mean, no offense, we went through this with the library, and you know what? They came right out of the gate and it went straight to the contingency where we, we almost, I wouldn't spend it all, but we've spent a lot of it. And we're at a point where we told them then, that's it. There's no other, and I sense, because I was at the meeting along with, I think all of us, the final meeting, where they were kicking around the contingency in, in the, um, library. And they said, oh yeah, that's adequate. That's more than enough. We bumped it up to seventy-five millions in order to get the contingency, because that's what, what it was. I'm kinda hearing you now saying, oh well gee, we might need that. Or well, it's, it's good business practice. And I'm sitting here saying, usually you come in here, you're pretty definitive. You're wallowing here on me. And I can tell that you've got something there, or you're fearful of something, and I'm like, we're above ground. What heaven's name is the, in the, the plans or that's in there that you're, you're thinking that yes indeed, there're gonna be some major change orders? Or are these twenty-four potential change orders gonna be something significant?
Uh, I, I, I don't think there's anything significant in it. As I said, you know, we, we track what's been submitted by the contractor. And we review every, every line item of those, labor, material, equipment. And then we also track what, what hasn't been submitted, but what we think may be coming down the line. So, you, you know, what, what's there, I, I, I haven't attached the...
What else can we do with that money? Uh, we wanna give it back to the taxpayers.
Right, well, i- i- in theory, you, you don't borrow it, so you, you know, whatever we don't spend, you won't, you won't borrow. Um, you know, ba- based on, on that bid amendment, you know, we think the project's gonna come in under seventy million. It's gonna be about sixty-nine point five million. And, so you just don't borrow that, that extra, extra money.
I mean, people think their taxes are gonna go up three hundred dollars, and it'll only go up two hundred and twenty dollars.
Right.
That's, that's what we want. I know John wants it too, yeah. But we don't want it to go up two hundred and forty million because we added to the contingency and all of a sudden, it's a four million dollar contingency instead of a two point five million dollar contingency.
Um, yeah, we, we, it was a recommendation we, we made to bump it up. We had bid savings. We, we, we recommended to use it as...
So my question is, what else can we do with it?
It, well, if you don't use it...
If you guys, yeah.
It just stays where?
You don't borrow it.
You don't borrow it.
You just don't spend it.
So, so, so if we only, if we end up spending two point five million on that contingency, you only borrowed two point five million in contingency.
So where are you taking it from to put it in?
From, from the bid savings. The, 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 the project budget is, is, is approved at seventy-five point seven five million. We had, we had almost eight and a half million dollars in, in bid savings. So we're saying, let's take a million and a half of that bid savings and put it in contingency.
And my question is, why?
For, for, for extra comfort in ca- in case we need it.
What's gonna happen to it if we don't do that?
Nothing.
Nothing?
The same, the same as the other, the, the same as the other five million that...
So what's compelling you to do this, other than to be more conservative right now?
Nothing. There's, there's...
Some of the people on the committee, and I just have suggested that three percent was too low in the first place.
It's five.
Five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, five.
I mean, we were all there. We had to vote.
Right.
Let me ask you a question, just so everybody understands. I, I think I already know the answer, but if we don't do this and you end up needing the money, we're in a bad position.
Well, we're, we're not in a bad position. It just means we then have to go back to MSBA and, and do another amendment to that, that contract.
So why can you do it now without having to do that, but later you're gonna have to?
I, I would rather do it now when we're doing an amendment anyway.
So you have to go to the MSBA anyways and make an amendment, and you just wanna add this to it?
Right, yeah. So we've ju- we've just moved money from, from that construction budget line item down into the contingency line item. Because we saved it in, in, in the construction line item.
We have a new project funding agreement that's ready to be approved. MSBA, based off this number, has provided a new project funding agreement. We'll bring it to the school building committee next Wednesday. Um, and, and once that's approved, we sign it, they sign it, that's, that's what we hold it, hold us to. And that gives us the reimbursement amount.
So is it like a phase two that you're going to them with and say, okay, now here's six million dollars? And on top of that, you wanna tack a million dollars to put in the contingency?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So just because you happen to be going to the MSBA for something else, you'd like to s- put this in there as well?
At this time, yeah.
Shane's a little bit of a natural pessimist sometimes, but I don't think we're gonna, you know, come anywhere near.
Well, we just got burned on the library.
Yeah.
And Sean's been up here for twenty years. He's been burned twenty times, you know?
Just an example of an old building. I'm not su- I'm, I'm not surprised.
Well, yeah, we, we, when the bids came in lower than we anticipated, we took that savings and put two-thirds of it, I think, into contingency.
So is it fair to say most of the change orders are from the actual renovations part of it?
Um, yeah, there, there's been a mix. I mean, you know, there's been some, some unforeseen's in the renovation, and, and we had some unforeseen's in the ground. Uh, there's been some, you know, what we call errors and omissions on the architect where, you know, something slipped through the crack during design. Um, there's been a couple of things that we worked with the fire department, that they asked us to put in some extra stuff, which we put in. And, uh, and there's been a couple of owner requested changes too.
Well, I'd be interested to hear what the building committee thinks.
How does that work with the errors and omissions on this contract?
Um...
Just wondering, with a, with an architect, I'm just curious.
Well, there, there's expected to be some, some level of those. Um, again, going back to, you know, what your contingency is, usually about one to one and a half percent of change orders will be errors and omissions.
Thanks.
Good news is we've knocked just about everything down.
Mm-hmm.
Little exception of the H building still has to come down.
H building has to come down, but that's, we, we, we know what we have there.
The entire building or just a...
Just a portion.
Just a portion of, of that small building at the back.
And, and, you know, we're out of the ground, pretty much, right now. Just about.
Yep.
So...
I, I've got some other questions on...
Well, we don't vote on that, right?
No.
So...
School building committee.
Quick question though, um, maybe this is to you, John. What's going on with the, um, parking lot in the back, or Shane, for the next, you got football coming psycho. You've got, um, you know, the, um, soccer, the whole thing. And I, I know like right now, one of the concerns I have is there's like a maze that you have to go to get to the basketball courts. I raised the concern with Tricia one night because there were only like two lights on. It was nine o'clock. Summer slam had finished, and two, uh, women were walking out, that whole thing. There was nobody around. And, uh, one of them was my daughter, the other was the, uh, the coach. And I was like, that's not good, besides all of the obstacles. Because let me tell you, it's a, it's not only just a maze, but it's just, there are a lot of obstacles. The fences on the ground, I know they spray painted it pink, but frankly, you're not looking at curbs, you got tree limbs. You've got, at one point I saw rebar, they moved the rebar though the next day. And I was like, how much longer is that? Because sooner or later, somebody's gonna get injured. And I'll be candid, I can see them bringing in action because it's, that's a potential, that is a torfest right there.
Um, well, we, we did, I, I, I got your email, and, and the next day I, I walked the site with, with the contractor. And we, we, we tried to take care of, of those as, as much as we could. Um, football starts, I think, in, in, in mid-August, so, so we're gonna make, you know, we're gonna make provisions for them to park in the back, and they'll be able to get into the high school through the cafeteria door. So we're gonna, we're gonna bring fences for them to get in there. Um, the parking over by the stadium won't be open until the, the end of August. So you're still gonna have to go all, all the way around there. But come, come the end of August, when school is back, uh, you should be able to get all the way around to the basketball courts and the tennis courts.
Can you pull that fence away so that you have a roadway, so an emergency vehicle get back there if they had to?
Um, we, it, it stayed today, Tony, because we're, we're, as I said, we're bringing that electric service around where, where that access road was before. So today, you might be able to drive there. Tomorrow, there might be a, a wide trench, so...
I've been there quite a bit. There's never been, there's never been a lane that a vehicle could get in.
Yeah.
And I'm just concerned, particularly for, I mean, someone got injured on the baseball field and an ambulance was able to go in from the side and get in.
Right, and, and...
Basketball courts, what John's talking about, I don't know how you get anything over there.
The, the fire department does have keys to the gates right here, and, and they can get right through there.
They go through this gate here to get to the basketball court. So they, they'd have a direct line to the basketball court.
So they, they could get in there.
And, okay, now that football's happening, what about football? Because that's the one that's in equal distance between the two accesses. Is there an ability to...
If you go that way, can you get all the way to the football field?
No, you can't.
Well, but yeah, yes and no. It depends what they're doing that day with the...
Tony's point makes sense though. You have a, you have a, an area. Is there a way of them expanding it slightly? Or do they, I know they got dirt...
I can, I, I can look at them. And when we left, we, we, we left that fence where it was for, for disabled access to get to the, the stadium. Um, you know, so it's only, I think, six feet wide. I, I can go and ask them, can we make it twelve feet wide to get an ambulance there?
We have our project meeting tomorrow. We can bring this up, you know, so we'll, we meet every Wednesday. We can raise that point about access for emergency vehicles. But I mean, we basically, the site has been, you know, the, the, it'll be back to, you know, normal, as normal as normal can be at a construction site by...
School, school starts.
By, by August twenty-fifth. I mean, that's the goal, so...
It hasn't been that bad for baseball season. They, you know, people are parking...
Right, we were able to, you know, keep that lane open. I mean, that was a concession by the contractor. I mean, if you can remember originally, that was all gonna be blocked off. We were gonna have to access up by cushion, which was, would have been even worse. We were looking at temporary lighting being put in there. So they've been able to, you know, sort of phase this over on this side. And, you know, at least you can get back there and park next to the field. So that's been, that's been useful there.
It's been very good. It's just...
It, it is getting around to the basketball courts, you know, and, and again, complicating it also was skate park construction, which, you know, was supposed to be out of there in June. They're still, I think they're wrapping up. I don't know.
They're wrapping up this week.
This week, so, that's been a little bit delayed too, and, and, you know, that's, that's been in the way of this, as well.
What are they doing with all the foul balls? A ton of balls in that. Oh my God. It's brutal.
Okay, just so, so just noted that the MSBA has been coming out, uh, making monthly site visits. So we, we bring them around and, and grow, go through everything with them. Uh, some, some, some good news, the, the MSBA has been reimbursing the town. Uh, and to date, uh, the town has received, uh, just over four point eight million dollars in, in reimbursement. Um, just to note, uh, our project, uh, meetings are held weekly at the, uh, the trailers over there. So we've got the general contractor, uh, the architect, John, Paul Donlin, and, and some others, uh, Rob Worgo and, and Ryan Lynch at End. Situate Facilities Department, and, uh, the building inspector also comes regularly to that, and we, uh, we chair those meetings. Um, just the, uh, the building committee, we meet once a month, the, uh, the second Wednesday of the month. Uh, ourselves and the architects give the committee an update on, on the progress and, and, uh, what we think we will be doing. Uh, we review the, the current potential change orders, we review all the project invoices, and, uh, we talk about any other relevant, uh, information or, or business at that time. So, um, you know, all, all in all, we've been, we've been very happy. Um, you know, we, we just got an invoice yesterday for, for four point nine million dollars for, uh, for July. So they're, they're really cranking it out. They did four million dollars worth of work in, in June. So, so they've been moving pretty quick, and, uh, we've been happy with the way things are going.
Like all the projects, even though it has been raining, which we need the rain, it's helped on the construction side, so, um, there's been a lot of progress there.
That's good.
Anybody have any?
Oh, I don't have any, no, no.
Thank you very much, Shane. Thanks, John. Shane, John, thank you.
Marty, you might wanna take the article under the Harbor Masters Boat Award, so Stephen can...
Sure, absolutely. We have a discussion and vote on the contract for the, uh, Harbor Masters Boat. Stephen Moon is here. How are you, Stephen?
Great. How are you this evening?
How are you?
Wonderful. How's everybody tonight?
Good.
Good.
Um, so I'm here tonight to, um, see if you'll approve the contract that, uh, has been put together for the new Harbor Master Boat. Um, we, uh, got the funding at the last town meeting. Um, I did do a, a search. I called, um, a number of the vendors through government sales. Then I worked through GSA along, uh, with Paul Sullivan from the GSA office in Boston. Came down to the office. We got a number of vendors that were interested, and two vendors, uh, submitted proposals. And one works for us.
Both vendors from the already bid-out GSA contract?
All done to GSA contract. They were already pre, pre-bid.
Okay.
Pre-approved.
Perfect.
Does the boat have all the functionality you wanted?
Yes.
How else the boat we're replacing? I know it was probably said at... How else the boat we're replacing? I know it was probably set at town meeting. I'm just...
It was, it was probably the oldest boat that we have. It was unit 1. It was an old Boston Whaler that we're taking out of service. It was damaged, I think, last year. And that's the boat we're replacing.
So it's, I can't see the number, but it said it's under $45,000.
Forty-four something.
And it's under, we allocated $45,000 and the price is $44,000 something. Is that right?
No, you allocated $150,000 and it's $148,000.
$148,000.
I didn't see that one.
It was a bigger bargain than the five. Jeez, buy it for 48.
$148,766.
And it's under the...
And it's under the $150,000.
Good job.
I have some line drawings of the boat, if you want to see them.
Just to give you guys a little heads up, Keith, if I misspeak, or Steve, correct me. The boats that we have had in the past and the way they were made are what they call a balsa core. So you have fiberglass on the inside, fiberglass on the outside. And after, you know, cracks and dents and things like that, the core starts to suck up water. And when it starts to suck up water, it, you know, doesn't go as fast as sort of seaworthy. It's pretty hard to dry a boat out. This, I hope, is solid core.
I believe this boat is a solid core boat. If not, they've changed...
Keith, am I on track there? I mean, I've seen, you know, different...
This is not, this is built by Brunswick, but it is not a Boston Whaler. And it says heavy-duty fiberglass hull. So it does not say, although...
Solid corner.
I'm not sure if it is cored or not. It does not say that it is. With the old Boston Whalers, they were just foam and foam would absorb water because it wasn't closed cell. Some of the manufacturers started using balsa coring and that would also absorb water. So then they switched to an end grain. So the water would only absorb in the smaller area around where it was cracked. So it wouldn't spread out. I'm not sure if this is a cored hull or not. It is built for the government. When I was down in Florida on vacation, I went to Florida Fish and Wildlife. They're like the environmental police are up here. They run the 750 and 850 impact up and down the coast. They love them. They've been very happy with them and that's their boat of choice.
Single or two motors?
Twin engines.
Motion would be great.
Move to award the contract to Brunswick Commercial and Government Products for the purchase of a new Harbor Master vessel authorized in Article 4 N of the annual town meeting on 4 in April of 2016 for an amount not to exceed $148,766 through the Government Services Administration Small Craft and Marine Equipment Contract Number GS-07F-0011J.
It's here.
Huh?
Oh, second.
I'm sorry. Second amendment, Mr. Harris. Further discussion?
Just was wondering, when?
They, they're telling me it's 90 to 120 days. They asked for 150 just because we put that, you know, penalty clause in the contract. So they wanted to be sure. But it's 90 to 120 days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Quick question. What are we doing with the engine from the present boat that we're taking out?
I'm going to work with the town administrator to dispose, for deposition of the old boat and motor.
Let me ask you, is it still usable?
The old motor?
No, the engine.
The old engine off the other boat?
Right.
I think it has about 3,000 hours is what I'm told. It's probably close to end of life.
Oh, it is. I was going to say, what about the fire boat? Because that needs an engine, right?
The government boat we got?
Yeah.
No, you need, yeah, that's too small.
Do that, oxalate off.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, Stephen.
You as well.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Steve.
Next, we're going to do a discussion and vote on some one-day wine and malt licenses.
I'll move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to the Silent Chef for an event taking place at the Situate Maritime Center on August 7, 2016, starting at 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM for a graduation party.
Second.
Second amendment, Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. I further move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to the Silent Chef for an event taking place at the Situate Maritime Center on August 12, 2016, starting at 5:30 PM to 9:30 PM for a rehearsal dinner.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. I move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to hospitable hostess for an event taking place at the Situate Maritime Center on August 11, 2016, starting at 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the Situate Library Foundation fundraiser.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Finally, I move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to
Ellen Mackenzie for an event taking place at the Situate Maritime Center on August 6, 2016, starting at 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have discussion and vote on some board and committee appointments.
I'll move to appoint Susan Scavo Gallagher to the Situate Cultural Council for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Recreation Commission?
Move to appoint David Smith to the Recreation Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a discussion and vote on the state primary polling hours.
Now, where is it?
The state move that we vote. State primary poll hours for Thursday, September 8, 2016, to be set from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Situate High School Chimney Stadium, which is at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Highway in Situate.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. We have to discuss and schedule the annual board retreat.
What do we have to do?
Let's look at our calendars for September, end of September. Does that sound good?
I am away the 23rd to the 30th.
Beginning of October?
Something going on the beginning of October, the first weekend. What is it?
When are you away in September again?
23, which is a Friday to 30. Just that week.
I'm out the 1st of October through the 3rd.
Can we do it the week prior? They're really not pushing out to October.
I can't do it that weekend.
And this is, I can't do it this weekend.
Number 17?
The long weekend is what, the 6th or something, 6, 7th?
Five, four, three, four, five is Labor Day.
Okay.
Does September 17th work for everybody?
I think that would probably be okay with me, I think. Can we double check? Can we shoot for that date and take a look? Sure. Or do you want to try and schedule it now when we can?
You can just check your calendars.
Is there a second date, the 23rd? Are you leaving the 23rd?
It's my annual conference.
September, okay.
So September 17th.
So it's either that date or it's October 15th or something?
And the week prior to that's no good? No? 15th.
Either's fine for me. 10th or the 17th is fine for me.
Three, four, five is Labor Day. So you'd have, what, the 10th or the 17th? I don't have a calendar for...
That would be my second choice. It's my wedding anniversary.
Oh.
The 10th is?
Thank you.
Who would you rather spend it with?
That's all right. We can do that as a backup date if you want, September 10.
17th and then back up the 10th?
Yeah.
I think the 17th's fine.
Just let me know.
We've got to check our schedule. It's fine with you.
No, but I mean, you said it was okay.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, I heard you.
Just to check with the boss.
We'll check. But that's the one we'll try and work around.
A single decision.
It's easy because I'm the boss.
Neither.
Is there any correspondence?
You all have to check with the boss.
I think we have a lot of correspondence that needs to be read.
Yes, we do.
Where's the clerk?
Yeah, I'm done reading.
Okay, I'm sorry. Where are we?
Correspondence?
Can you read the minutes when you read that really long?
Oh, yeah. I didn't hear. Can you say it again?
In the correspondence, we have a letter to Mr. Vignani from FEMA commending our efforts to put forth and implementing the floodplain management measures for the town of Situate and just wanting to advise us that the new FIS and FIRMs, which is the maps, will become effective on November 4, 2016. And we also need to make sure that we get it approved within that time as well, the town meeting. Right?
Right.
So that is one of the correspondence. We have a nice letter from the Friends of Situate Seniors thanking the Board of Selectmen for donating and being a sponsor of the golf tournament at Widow's Walk, which was held back on June 17. So we were happy to support that. And so that is from Gene Young saying thank you. So thank you for your letter. And how much did they raise that day?
$9,000.
$9,000? That's great. That's great. Go towards, so thank you, Gene, and the Friends of Situate Seniors for organizing that. We also have a nice thank you letter from Paula and Don Jacobs, which I'm going to read. Dear Situate, it's short. Dear Situate Board of Selectmen, we want to thank you and the DPW Department for resurfacing the top of the seawall on Lighthouse Road. We live at number 11 Lighthouse and truly appreciate the town coming here and finishing in one week before July 4, making the area safe for all of our neighbors, visitors, dogs and children who enjoy the beach and walk on the seawall daily. Thank you, Paula and Don Jacobs. So that was very nice too, to take the time to write that letter.
DPW did a great job getting that together quickly.
And that seems to be all the correspondence that we have today.
We've got some minutes to read.
The Board of Selectmen approve the meeting minutes of July 5, 2016, and also July 19, 2016.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Then have a motion to adjourn and sign documents.
So move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night, folks.